Thank you all for coming tonight on this kind of drizzly night. I can't believe that last week we entered into hurricane season. I feel like we just left it in November, but it does in November 1st, so it is a long season. And tonight, we're going to be talking about emergency preparedness, but not just for hurricanes. This is for any emergency that could happen year-round. And we have two great department heads that are going to be speaking tonight. Do you want to come up one at a time? Our first one is our emergency manager, John Zaracino, and he's the one that decorated too, so I just, please give him a hand. This is awesome.[47.14][47.14](APPLAUSE). And in a moment, our building director, Eric Cortinez, will be up as well and talk about some other preparedness and also post-emergency preparedness. But again, thank you all for coming tonight, and we're going to answer questions at the end. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everybody. How you all doing? Thank you for braving the weather and coming out and showing your compassion and how important emergency management preparation is for you all. Before we start, we're going to go a little post-hurricane. And these signs up here are what you're going to see post-hurricane, and they're really important. If you see a sign that says "Emergency Scene Ahead," obviously, we could have a road cave-in. There could be multiple things going on. You're going to need to pay close attention when you go up the road. If it's one-way, we could have a tree across the road. You may not want to take that road. You may want to go up the road and take a different turn. Yield, there could be anything going on. You know what yield means? You need to slow down and stop and just watch what we're doing. Work zone ahead, it's obvious. They're going to be working. There's going to be multiple, you know, we have a storm come in like Ivan back in 2004. There's going to be multiple projects going on throughout our jurisdiction and community, and there's going to be work zone signs everywhere. Obviously, you know it's stopping one-way and center, and all our barricades and all that stuff. So that was all, that's why we put all that up there, so you all could see just what you're going to see, and so you know what you're looking at. So we're just going to go ahead and we're going to do a little presentation. When we're done with the presentation, in the back of the room, we have a bunch of handouts, which I think you've already seen most of them. You don't have to sit here and read them right now. Just take them home and utilize them when the time's right, and let's get prepared and Emergency Preparedness. I want you to see on the side that says 72 hours. 72 hours is the national rule of thumb. Anytime a hurricane, or any large event, or anything that threatens our area, whether it be man-made or natural disaster, they give us 72 hours to make sure that we can stay prepared in our community. We need to prepare ourselves for 72 hours. But as we move forward, you're going to see a little change. It's going to go to 120, and I'm going to explain that. But the rule of thumb nationwide is 72 hours. We need to prepare for a bare minimum of 72 hours. Winston Churchill once said, "Let our advanced worrying become our advanced thinking and planning." That speaks for itself. Are you prepared? Have you ever thought about how to prepare for an emergency? How would you take care of yourself from 72 to 120 hours? There's where 120 comes in. The rule of thumb, again, is 72 hours, but nowadays, if you go and you sit in on these, they're telling you, "Don't count on 72 hours. You may not see help in 72 hours." Does everyone, all you all remember Katrina? Remember how long it took for them to get to them? They weren't there helping them in 72 hours. So you need to prepare for 120. I believe in preparing for the worst and hoping for the best. The best would be 72 hours, but it's not realistic. 120 hours is very realistic, and in 120 hours, more than likely, there's going to be help that's going to arrive to bring you what you need. We're going to have all kinds of resources coming in. Disasters disrupt lives. They can strike anywhere, anyone, anytime. This is not all about hurricanes. We all sit in this room, and we think, "It's going to be a hurricane." It's not all about hurricanes. We have flooding. April 2014, we had a very large flooding event in Fairhope. How many was here for, how many people were here for that? We had a lot of damage to the city of Fairhope. It was a presently-declared event. There was millions of dollars in damage, and so it's not just flooding, or it's not just hurricanes. How many of you all know that we're also on a hurricane fault, or not a hur, I'm sorry, earthquake fault? We could actually have an earthquake here. And a lot of people in South, most people in South Alabama don't know that. Every once in a while, I don't know if you know, just the last couple of years, we've had some shaking going on, and it's been documented that we've actually had hurricanes. It's usually out in the Gulf, but it's been documented. We actually have it. We've got tornadoes. You know, the climate's changed, and it used to be when the tornadoes were in Kansas and Oklahoma and all those places. Now we're having major tornadoes in North Alabama and moving south. So, you know, it's not, it's not all Oklahoma and even North Alabama anymore. The tornadoes are even moving south. So when you prepare, when you get all your stuff ready, you're not just preparing for a hurricane, you're preparing for any event that could happen here locally. And believe me, we just never know from one day to the next what's going to happen. Being prepared is the best strategy. Following a disaster may take up to 120 hours for help to arrive, like I said a minute Three steps in getting prepared for your disaster. Know your risks, like we just talked about. Hurricanes, flooding, tornadoes, God forbid earthquakes, God forbid any of them as far as that goes. Make a plan. In the back, we have, if any, if any of you all did not get one of these, make sure you leave with one of these. In the back of this book is a template for planning. You can set, you can write your plan in there. In the back, it has, you can put up a six of your family members in there, where your schools are, all the different information is right in the back of this book. And all you do is fill in the blanks. It even has the little ones you can clip out, and you can put the information and put them in your wallet. So if you don't get one of these, or they're out back there, just let someone know, we have more in the box. Make sure you take one of these. These are really important. The second, oh, build two kits. I'm sorry. Let me back up. Build two kits. And the reason we build two kits is because, for those of you all that don't know, and I'm sure over the years, you all recently heard that NOA is very good at predicting where hurricanes are going to make landfall. Two, three, four, five years ago, the cone for a hurricane, you look at it on the screen, and it's like, way out here. Nowadays, if you're looking at them, the cones are more like this. And the reason is, is because they've just, they've just almost mastered on, mastered on being able to predict where they're going with very great accuracy. The one thing they cannot predict very well at all, and they're working on that, and I'll tell you about that in a second, the one they cannot predict very well is the intensity of the storms. How many, how many in here were here during Ivan? Do you all remember going to bed and went to bed? It was like a, like a strong cat, one or two. Woke up in the middle of the night, it was a cat four, and strengthening. We were very fortunate, it came into Gulf Shores, a cat three. Well, that's why we prepare two kits. The one kit you're going to prepare is the kit in case you're going to stay at your house for a cat one, a small storm. You're not under mandatory evacuations. You're going to have your water and all your good stuff, and we're going to go over some of that, and it's all in the paperwork back there, tells you what you need to get. But your second kit's going to be, prepare you in case you have to evacuate. If all of a sudden, you wake up, or 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the afternoon, they're saying, "This thing looks like it's going to strengthen to a cat four, mandatory evacuation's all along the Gulf Coast from Appalachia Cola to, to, to South Florida, or the Panhandle of Florida," then you've got to get out and you have to have a plan ready. And if you don't have a second kit ready, you're not going to be prepared, and you're going to be vying for all the stuff out there that you need to get. You've got to keep in mind, when a hurricane hits the Atlantic, everyone on the Gulf Coast hits the stores and vies for the same thing. They're all fighting for the same thing. I remember one time I went out to, it was actually Hurricane Ivan. I went out to hurricane, out to Loews after Hurricane Ivan, or before Hurricane Ivan, and I wanted this generator. I had shrimp in my freezer. I did not want to lose my shrimp. And I get my 100 pounds of shrimp every year. I put them in the freezer, and I do not want to lose them. So I didn't have my, I didn't care how much it cost. I didn't care the generator cost more than the shrimp. I was getting a generator. So I got out there, and I got this huge line, and there's just people lined up, and I'm like, 100 people back, and I'm walking, and I'm walking, I'm getting closer and closer, and I'm thinking, "Ooh, this generator's going to cost me about $500." And I'm getting closer and closer, and I got like two away, and the door shut, and I'm like, "Yes, I saved my $500. I'm just going to go share my shrimp with everyone." So I turned it on, and started to walk away, and they said, "Ah, two more generators." So anyway, I ended up buying my generator. I didn't have to share my shrimp with anybody, but my shrimp cost me about $25 a pound that year. So, to make a long story short, you know, when, when the storms start threatening, everyone out there is vying for the same thing. That's why we prepare early. If we don't prepare early, you don't want to be out there fighting with any people over, you know, loaves of bread, and milk, and ice, and all that good stuff. And with that said, since I was talking about a generator, very important with a generator, make sure your generator's 20 feet from your house. We don't want to get having any carbon monoxide poisoning. I did 24 years on the fire department, and we don't want to come to your house because someone's knocking on your door, and there's no one answering the door, and they know you're in there, because your generator's too close to the house. Happens all the time. Moving on. Know the risks in your community, as we talked about. The consequences of emergencies can be similar, but knowing what risks are in your community can help you better prepare. I guess the best way to put that, if you live on County Road 1, or you live south of Pier Street, the flood, the water comes up over the roads, and especially on County Road 1, it's going to inundate them all. You know, we're very fortunate in Fairhope. We don't have a lot of flooding, but we do have flooding in some of the roads. So remember the old saying, "Turn around, don't drown." If there's flooding across the road, turn around, go back. But we're very fortunate that we're higher up, and we don't get a lot of the inundation from the storm surge. But if you live on the bayfront, or you live on, down on County Road 1, or any of those areas, people that have been here before know that you're going to get some. Step two, make a plan. You're not prepared until you make a plan. In that book that I was telling you about, you're going to see a list just like this one right up here, but it's going to be a little, it's going to be a little smaller. It has enough, it has enough for six people in your family. If you have more six, more than six family members, go ahead and take two of them. That would cover, you can get all your family members on the list. It has all kinds of information, schools, emergency contact numbers, about everything you would need. And you just put that away somewhere, and you put it in an envelope, and you save it and keep it ready for hurricane season. Use the family communication list as a guide. Make copies of your plan and hand it out to other family members. Keep copies in a safe and memorable place. Don't go put it up in the closet somewhere under your taxes that you haven't looked at in 10 years, and that you'll never be able to find when a hurricane starts threatening. Step two, special needs plan. People that have special needs. I take medication. If I had to evacuate, or I needed medication, you've got to remember, we might lose power for two, three weeks. It might be two weeks, might only be a week. You know, but worst-case scenario, we lose it two, three, four weeks. You run out of your medication, the pharmacies aren't open yet. You need to make sure you have backups on your medications. Make sure you check your insurance information, your grab-and-go bag medications prescriptions, important documents, your mobility equipment, oxygen tanks and supplies. And when we get to the shelter part, I'll show you why you need to make sure. We have electrical shelters throughout the, throughout the county. They're designated for people that are on oxygen and different things like that, so you can go there and have, have your electricity or your power. Don't forget your animals. We've got a little sheet back there for how many in here has animals? How many people are going to leave your animals behind? No, I'm not, I'm just kidding. I'm not going, I'm not leaving them. My wife would leave me behind before she left my dogs. So anyway, how are you going to transport your pets? You know, when we have storms going on, the winds are blowing, and, and, you know, everything's flooded, and you've got to have something to carry them in. You've got to have carrying cases. However you transport your dog or cat normally, you need to have something ready for them. Extra pet food and water in your emergency kit. It's just like everything else. When the storm's coming, everyone's out there vying for everything, get off the shelves, and they're going to grab up all the dog food. If you don't stock up on your dog food, your fido might not get any, you might get some of your shrimp in the freezer. Copies of vaccinations, rabies records, and vet contact. And the reason for that is because there are some shelters, and we're going to get to a slide in a minute that I'll, that you'll see that. Actually, this is the right one, right here. This one is for, this is, let me back up. There's copies of your vaccinations, rabies records, and vet contact. There's, there are some shelters across the state, and there's a link to that, and that link's on the Baldwin County EMA website. If you take your cats, or dogs, or animal, any other animals to these sites, you need to have their records, because if they're not properly vaccinated, they may not accept them in there. On the very bottom down here, you can go to the Baldwin County website, and I think we're going to be posting this, we're going to be posting this, Jeff. This will be available for you on the city website, or the city Facebook page. Down at the bottom down here, this gives you every pet-friendly hotel in the whole state of Alabama. You just go and type in that link, and it'll tell you every single pet-friendly hotel there is. And I used it before. And I only use it because my wife wasn't going out of town without my dogs. We didn't have a storm. But I wanted to go to the ballgame, and I had to take the dogs. Practice makes perfect. If we get all this stuff ready, and we throw it in the closet, behind all our boxes and our little things, and we never look at it again, and comes time to do it, and Mama says, "Let's go ahead and get out our plans," and then Dad says, "Where are they?" "I don't know." And if you don't get them out, you don't practice them, it's never going to work, just like everything else. You know, growing up in all of our careers and everything, we practiced and worked real hard, and that's how we all became successful. You've got to do the same thing when it comes to planning for storms. The most prepared, more prepared you are, the better off you're going to be. Step three, build a kit. If you had to prepare to be self-sufficient for 72, again, to 120 hours, what would you put in your kit? All the obvious things that most of you all probably already know about, but we're going to look at them anyway. We have our bottled water. One gallon, rule of thumb, is one gallon of water per person per day. The old, the old, the old time filling up the bathtub, you know, you can still do that. Make sure your bathtub's clean, clean it with bleach. You can still fill your bathtub with water and do that, but they don't recommend it a whole lot anymore. Too much bottled water out there, you can buy, but you can do that. But the rule of thumb is one gallon of water per person per day. But you've got to remember, we live in South Alabama. We have hurricanes, not normally in June, when we do have them, it's normally later in the season, and it's really hot. And when it's really hot, we drink a lot more water. So you might want to up that in South Alabama. Cash. If the power's out, the ATMs are out, you don't have any cash, and you need something that you forgot to get, and the stores start opening up, you can't get your money out of the bank, it's not going to do you any good. So you need to stash some cash. First aid kit. Everyone needs a first aid kit. Buy them at CVS, just about any pharmacy, you can buy a first aid kit. It's great to have a first aid kit. You never know when you're going to need it. Can opener, for obvious reasons. When we have hurricanes threatening, I tell my wife to go buy steak, because I like steak, and I have a generator. So if my generator ever goes out, I'm going to feed the whole neighborhood steak. But, most people, and smart people, buy canned foods. If you buy canned foods, and peanut butter, and bread, and, and, you know, everyone says, "Get all the, get all the milk, get all the milk," but if power goes out and they don't have a generator, that don't help much, because everyone, they're going to be sharing their milk with everyone, too. But you want non-perishable items. You need multiple different means of communication. You want a, you want a weather radio. You want to make sure you're watching the TV. You want to make sure you're watching multimedia. You want multiple means of communications with all the weather-related agencies around, because you're going to be getting information inundated with information from everyone, from the city of Fairhope to CNN. And follow the city of Fairhope, because we're going to have the correct information. I promise you. All right, links for preparedness. There's a new organization, not a new organization, but a, I'm trying to think of the word for it. There's a new thing going on, it's called Hurricane Strong. I went to the National Hurricane Conference this year, and they're promoting it, and it's a, it's a new organization. It's basically just preparedness. You can go to Hurricane Strong, and again, you can look when we post this on the, on the city Facebook page. You can go to these links. Anything you would want to know that you haven't heard from us in here tonight, and if you didn't hear something from us here tonight, I didn't know about it, because we need to make sure it's right next time. But with that said, you can go to Hurricane Strong, you can look up just about anything we didn't talk about, if I forgot anything. FEMAready.gov will cover some of this presentation from, came from FEMAready.gov. They have a tremendous amount of information. You can also go to the American Red Cross at redcross.org, and they have a tremendous amount of information. So any, where's it not, information's not lacking, it's everywhere. So anything, anything you all need, and after we're done here, by the way, we're going to have, if you want to ask any questions, we're going to, we're going to take, you know, we'll do some questions and answer session, and if there's anything we can't answer, we'll, we'll take your name down, your phone number. Within a couple of days, we'll have an answer for you. All right, here's our shelters. The general public shelters, all right, I want to explain something that's extremely important here, and this is, this is huge. When Baldwin County tells you to evacuate, they mean evacuate. They don't want you in these shelters. If you look up there at the top, it says, "Shelters are last resort." The shelters are last resort. Those shelters are designed, I'm going to back up. It used to be there's shelters in Baldwin, in Fairhope, it used to be shelters in Daphne, it used to be shelters everywhere. And they've, and now, the new standards on shelters have been raised so high that they had to take all these shelters out. There's not a shelter in Fairhope anymore. The only shelter in Fairhope is an electrical special needs shelter, which is a Fairhope Satellite Courthouse. So when they start opening shelters, you're not going to know about these shelters four days out from hurricane landfall. You're going to know about these shelters about a day and a half to two days, if that's soon, because they don't want you to stay. They want you to do everything within your power to get out of the state of Alabama. That is, that is the standard, and that's what they want. But, on the other hand, if you are elderly, you don't have family that can move you. If you are sick, and you just can't go. If you don't have a car, if you can't afford to go, these shelters will be open for you. Buses will be provided, and there'll be a point where Baldwin County will activate their buses, the school system. There's an agreement in place with the Baldwin County EMA. They'll activate the school system. We'll have a pickup point, that'd be Fairhope High School. And all that'll be going out on social media. You'll, you'll hear every bit of it. You're not going to have to figure it out when the time comes, but if you want to make note of it now, it might be a good thing to note. But, you need to keep in mind, don't start, you know, we start getting threatened with a storm, you don't want to show up at these places, because they're not going to be open. They're not going to be open until they tell you they're open. The buses are not going to be pulling into Fairhope High School to pick you up until they say they're going to be picking you up. And again, it's a last resort. If you can't go anywhere else, we're going to make sure you're taken care of. So we have Baldwin County Coliseum. Baldwin County Coliseum is the main shelter for Baldwin County. It's, it's in Robertsdale, it, you can see everything, you can look, look everything up on site, but it's over in Robertsdale. It's huge, and it can, it can accept a lot of people. Then you have Daphne East Elementary School. They used to have Daphne High School, which is no longer a shelter, but you also have Daphne East Elementary on County Road 13, and you have the Baymanet Middle School. The medical special needs shelter. The medical, medical needs shelter, I want to explain this to you. Medical needs shelter is for persons with physical and/or mental conditions who require a limited medical nursing oversight. For further information, you go to, go to the Alabama Department of Public Health Emergency Preparedness and download their pamphlet. If you need this, you need to go on our, go on to the city Facebook page, and go ahead and go down, go and download their pamphlet, because it's going to be some really good If you go to that site, you need to bring someone with you. If you need, if you need that site, you need to bring someone with you, some type of caregiver with you. There'll be people there to help, but it's really going to be your responsibility. That is also the Baldwin County Coliseum. It's a separate part they have set up for that, for that, for special needs, for medical needs. Electrical support shelters. There's a bunch of them in Baldwin County, and the reason there's a bunch of them is because if you walk around a building, there's only a limited amount of outlets in the building. And, you know, there's a lot of people, I know, just think, you go into Walmart and your different stores around town, how many people you see walk around with oxygen alone that are on the oxygen machines? You know, the bottles only last so long. You know, there, there's just a lot of different things that, for medical needs, that they need electricity for. So they have multiple different ones, and our closest one is a Fairhope Satellite Courthouse. That doesn't mean it's the only one you can go to. You can go to the other ones. We have the Baldwin County Level 2 Community Shelter. We have the Baldwin County Coliseum, again, for electrical support. It's huge. We have the Fairhope Satellite Courthouse, like I talked about, and then you have the Foley Satellite Courthouse. When you enter any of these shelters, you'll have to register. You will also have to sign a, a release of liability, because they cannot guarantee, although these are highly fortified buildings, they cannot guarantee that something, that they're not going to blow away. And that sounds bad, but the fact of the matter is, they're highly fortified, the chances are slim to none, but, you know, anything could happen. So they make you sign these liability forms, just like when you go into a gym. All right, we have a city, how many of you all heard the city outdoor warning siren in Fairhope? Okay, we're going to explain that tonight, because that's been a little controversial. People don't understand it a whole lot. First of all, let me tell you what is not, or what it is, was designed for. Let me back up. Let me tell you what it was designed for. It was originally designed back two years ago, let me back up, let me go further. That siren used to be the Fairhope Fireman's, that's how we got called out. Back when I was a fireman, when that thing went off, the story on the street was, "Everyone, get off the roads. A fireman are on the way to the fire station. They're coming lights and siren, get off the road." So that's where the siren came from. Later on, it just sat up there, and we started setting it off when a fireman died. Then about two years ago, we had an event at, at the Arts and Crafts Festival. We had a storm come in with straight line, dangerous straight line winds. We were very, very fortunate that no one was hurt. It just so happened, they had completed their setup. There was multiple, there were multiple tents lost, multiple artists went home, they lost all their stuff. It was a, we were very, very fortunate. So me being the emergency manager for the city of Fairhope, I decided we have got to do something, and I thought about, after 24 years on the fire department, I thought about what we used to call Big Bertha, which is now our emergency siren. We just, we decided that we're going to try to make this thing work, and we'll use that as the emergency siren. So what I want you to understand, and the most important thing, without getting into this too long, that siren is designed to tell people outside, when it goes off, to take shelter. That means there's winds, a storm coming with winds of 65 mile an hour, per hour or higher, or there's a tornado warning, and you need to take shelter. It is not designed to tell you in your house. When you're in your house, you need to be listening to weather radios, you need to be watching the TV, listen to multimedia, or watching multimedia, reading everything you can. It is not designed to warn you in your house. Do not count on that to warn you, because that is not what it's designed for. If we're having Friday Night Art Walk, or we're having the state cook-off, or we're having any other event downtown Fairhope, if you hear that go off, that means you need to take cover in any, any building in the area that will let you in, it's just to tell you to get from outside. The siren would have went off tonight at 6:00. The siren's set off once a month on, for testing reasons. It's set off the first Tuesday of every month at 6:00 PM. The reason it was not set off tonight is because you don't set it off when there's bad weather in the area. If you set the siren off when there's bad weather in the area, then people start panicking, and they start running, and it's really just a test. So just remember, the first Tuesday of the month is when they set it off. The other very, very important thing to note, if you look at the bottom, I wrote down there, "At no point will the city of Fairhope sound an all-clear siren." Because if we sounded an all-clear siren every time we had an emergency situation and[1605.66] an all-clear siren every time we had an emergency situation and we set it off, you wouldn't be know, if we were, you wouldn't know if we were signing an all-clear, sounding an all-clear, or there was another emergency. So that's, and that's a national kind of rule of thumb on, on the sirens. You just don't ever sign, sound an all-clear. So if you hear one sound, there's, there's something going on. Make sure I got that. Let me back up and say, the National Weather Service issues a tornado warning and the city of Fairhope is in the National Weather Service warning polygon. Y'all seen those on TV on the news? They show the polygon. That's when it'll be set off. Again, when winds are 65 mile an hour or better, it, threatening of a severe thunderstorm warning, producing life-threatening winds. A confirmed tornado is spotted in Fairhope. Police officer driving across Greener Road sees a tornado whip across the road, calls the PD. PD sets off the siren. And as deemed necessary by the mayor, or myself, if we have, we had an incident some time ago that really turned out to be nothing, but I got a call from the National Weather Service. What we do, when we have special events going on, what we do is, we hook up with the National, I hook up with the National Weather Service and we, we have him, he calls me directly if anything's threatening in Fairhope. He knows if anything's threatening in Fairhope and we have an event going on downtown, he's going to call me directly. So he called me on the phone. He said, we got this storm coming across the bay, has, it has a curve in it and it could possibly produce a tornado. And he said, I think you need to do it. So we sent off the siren and I took a bunch of slack for it, but in all and all, better safe than sorry. So that might happen sometimes. You might hear it go off and you might think nothing of it, but you don't really know what's going, going on behind the scenes. Everything we do, we try, we do to protect you and the citizen, you and every other citizen in Fairhope. So, so, you know, if we set it off, there's something going on. All right. The city of Fairhope, our mayor, and the city of Fairhope has decided that we want to even go further and we want to alert y'all even better. So the city of Fairhope right now is reviewing an alert system. The alert system is, is a really awesome system. We're looking at a few different systems and we're working on it right now. The system can do multiple different things. It can tell you if, if we have the hurricane, or if we hear the siren going off in downtown Fairhope, it can send, it can send a message to your phone that'll show you the polygon or the area where that actual, the warning is actually for. If you lose, if you have a boiling water warning in your neighborhood, let's say that we have storm sewage, or sewage overflowing to the storm drains and, and it gets into the water system, they can actually mark an area and send out a message to just your neighborhood. It's not going, you're not going to get a message on, on, on the TV that says, you know, the south side of Fairhope needs to boil all their water. It's going to say whatever subdivision and it's going to show exactly in a circle or however they decide to mark it on the map. You'll get warnings for hurricanes. Everything will be coming out and it'll be becoming directly from Fairhope. So, the leadership in Fairhope's doing a really good job on trying to move us forward and, and get this new alert system in place. So, we're working real hard on that. We've been working on that now for almost six months. So, so something's probably going to happen here in the near future. So y'all look forward to it. And with that said, I think everyone, no, I'm not going to say that. I remember who's Mark Spitz was, but he once said, if you fail to prepare, you're prepared to fail. And that can't be so much further from the truth. So if y'all wanted, y'all just need to take everything we did tonight and take it home with you. And if you take all those papers home, there's nothing wrong with taking them all home with you, but send them somewhere where you're going to read them. Send them on your nightstand. Send them somewhere where you're going to read them. Because if you take them home and you put them in a drawer, they've done you no good. We truly care about our citizens in Fairhope. We want to make sure y'all prepared. And so if something, God forbid, something happens, we'll all be prepared. We can all work together as a community and be resilient. With that said, I'm going to hand it over to Eric Cortinez. Eric Cortinez is our, the director of the Building Department.
John's a tough act to follow. He's very good at this. As I meant, as, as John mentioned, I'm Eric Cortinez. I'm the head of the Building Department. John is worried about preparing you to have everything you need to evacuate, to have everything to take care of your family. Our concern in the Building Department, where we get involved, is prepping your house before you leave and dealing with any damage when you get back. It didn't look, I don't think we had a lot of hands. How many people were here during Ivan? The city folks. Okay. That's the last major hurricane we had. And as John mentioned, you know, we went to bed that night and it was, you know, a low-grade hurricane, a one to mid-two. We woke up, it was a four. And that's probably the most damage we've had here since way back with Camille. So, one of the things that you, some of the things that you need to look at as you're getting ready and preparing your home, check your insurance policies. How many of you know that you have flood insurance? How many of you don't know if you have flood insurance? Two separate things. Your homeowner's policy does not care, does not cover flood. Flood is covered under the National Flood Insurance Program. It's administered by FEMA. If you do not live in a designated flood zone, flood insurance is very affordable. You're talking $400, $500, $600 a year to cover your house. FEMA will tell you that 30% or more of all flood losses occur outside of designated flood zones. So you need to review your policy, double-check and make sure that you've got flood insurance. Also, we need to get your house ready before the storm hits. As he mentioned about evacuation, we do have a lot of flood-prone areas. We have a lot of different, actually, Fairhope has pretty much every major type of flood zone. There are different kinds. You have coastal flood zones. You have inland riverine flood zones. We have them all. We're one of the few communities that have all of those different types within our jurisdiction. Dealing with contractors. We have a lot of things that happen when, when the storm comes. You're going to see a lot of contractors roll into town. So there are some things that we're going to talk about to prepare you about how to deal with those contractors and the things that you need to get from them. And then we're also going to give you a list of contacts. So as we mentioned, review your insurance policy for coverage. One of the things that you do need to check on your policy, if you have damage to your home, the repair work has to meet the minimum current building code requirements. Okay? And those change over the course of the years. There are, there are riders on policies about meeting current code requirements. And we've run into folks who have had damage to their house, but they did not have that in their policy and their insurance did not cover the cost of what was required for the work to be redone. So please review your policy and make sure that you have that. As we mentioned about flooding, 30% outside of flood zones. How many were here during the April 2014 floods? Okay. Hundred-year flood, it was, it was one of the biggest flooding events we've ever had. We had 32 houses in this town that had water in them. Three of them were in a flood zone. 29 of them were not in flood zones. And if you think about it, it stands to reason. If you're in a flood zone, you have a required floor elevation you have to build to. Typically, they're safe. Outside of a flood zone, you may have a creek, or you may have a gully, or you may have a bad drainage area, and there's no elevation requirements for those floor slabs. They're low to the ground. That's where we suffered most of our flood losses. So, just because you're in a flood zone, or not in a flood zone, does not mean that you're not going, that you will flood. Locations, find locations to evacuate to. I was here for Ivan, then during Katrina and Rita. I stayed in town and I sent my, my wife and my kids off. What we did was, we have a tendency, when we evacuate, we run east and west. We don't go north. Because if the storm's coming in off the Gulf, it's going to take a northerly track and it's going to go up Birmingham or head up that way. So what we normally do is we identify hotels. We usually go somewhere between Lafayette and Jacksonville. Identify some hotels. We have dogs. I have two boxers. Got to find hotels that have dogs. We identify places in both locations, depending on where the storm's tracking. That's where we go. That's just how we do it. But plan ahead and find a place to go. Also, your evacuation routes. Don't we have, we have maps for evacuation routes, don't we, John?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, the evacuation routes, you need to think about it. What they will do if it's bad, they will contra-flow I-65 north. Correct? It's, it'd take you a while to get out of town because you're talking about everybody in coastal Alabama, in Mobile and Baldwin County, everybody trying to go that same direction. So you need to know where your evacuation routes are and plan ahead. The later you wait, the longer it's going to take you to get out. So as we mentioned, any repair work that you do is going to be required to meet our current requirements. So make sure that your policy will cover that. Okay. So, preparing your house. This is before you decide to leave. You're getting your house ready. If you have storage and accessory buildings, those little, those little buildings that you get at Lowe's and Home Depot are wonderful. They also are all laying on the side, on their sides when you get back from a storm. So you need to secure those buildings. Lawn furniture and loose items in the yard. You will see, a lot of times, folks have pools. If they've got, you know, pool furniture, they throw them in the pool, or they store them in the garage, or they get them out of the way. You do not want items that can be wind-borne debris. You would be surprised how little wind it actually takes to pick up and throw a lawn chair. So you want to secure all those items. Breakers in your panel. Keep your fridge and your freezer on if you've got food in it. Cut off anything that you don't need. There's no reason to have it on. Opening protection panels. How many, excuse me, how many of you have got window protection panels for your house? Okay. Anything built since 2012 will actually, prior to that, it's actually required, anything back to 2006, from 2006 to 2012, they allowed plywood. Starting in 2012, they required other materials. The reason for that, protecting your doors and windows, and you're going to see a graphic here in a minute, your doors and windows are part of the structural frame of your house. Houses are designed to keep the wind out. You do not want holes in windows and doors and getting wind inside and outside of the house. Like I said, sheds are wonderful. We see a whole lot of this after a storm. So, there's a number of different ways you can secure those, but you need to secure these buildings to the ground. Lawn furniture, lawn items. Lawn furniture looks wonderful. It's not going to look good sitting in your living room after it's crashed through your patio door. So, you want to secure those things, get those, get those put away so that they cannot become debris in the storm. Your electrical panels, as I mentioned, cut off your unnecessary breakers. Your panel should be labeled. If you're in a house that's been built within the last 10 or 15 years, it will be labeled as to what each circuit is. Get, cut off anything that is not essential. This is what I was talking about on the way wind treats a building. The whole idea of doors and windows is to keep the wind out. When it goes through, you see how it comes in and it creates lift and it creates a balloon effect. And if, you know, I was, I was telling Sherri Lee, I actually went through Hurricane Andrew in Baton Rouge. After it hit the tip of Florida, it came up through Louisiana and we were about a week without power. We saw a lot of roofs that were blown out. And that comes from wind or items penetrating windows, getting wind inside the house, and it just lifts the roof off. So these are more current items. This is called Fabric Shield. It's got the little grommets that attach. A lot of you will have those. I have those on my house. If you don't have those, plywood is fine, but you want something to prevent damage to those windows and keeping them intact. Okay, contractors. All contractors that do work in the city of Fairhope have to have a city license, and this includes emergency response contractors. One of the first things they should do is go to City Hall and get a license. One of the things we do when we issue city licenses is, if there are requisite state licenses, we verify that as well. Okay? If it's a non-residential building, if it's a commercial building and the value of the work is over $50,000 by state law, you have to have a state-licensed general contractor. That is a requirement. For residential, if the work is over $10,000, you are required to have a state-licensed home builder. The way that the licensing it for anyone who is not a home builder, they'll be classified as a miscellaneous contractor, handyman, maybe roofs. Roofs are a little different. They're not necessarily required to have a home builder's license, but there are specialty licenses that they can get. Part of the thing with the home builders board is if you have a home builder that defaults on a project or leaves you in a bad situation, there is a reclamation fund. They actually have investigators, and I talk to them all the time. They'll come down, they'll investigate your claim, and if they found that a state-licensed home builder has done wrong on your project, you might be eligible to receive money from this state fund to finish your project. Also, general contractors does not allow for residential work and home builders does not allow for commercial work. They don't cross. So, general contractors for commercial, home builders for residential. Permits. We issue permits during, during recovery. Okay? We will issue building permits for repair work. If a, and this is not just during a hurricane, at any time you deal with a contractor. If a contractor is unwilling or wants you to come get the permit, that's a big red flag to me. If you're paying them to do a job, they need to come get their permits. If they're not, there may be something wrong. Require written contracts and estimates. It's got to be in writing. We had a lot of people after Ivan, had handshake deals, and they did not go well. Check the contractor's information. You can always go to the Better Business Bureau, Angie's List, there's other things. Ask for references. Ask and find out a little bit about them. Require that they show you that they have liability insurance. If one of their workers is hurt at your house, legally, you can be held liable for that, for, for their injuries. Ask them about bonding. A lot of contractors will, will bond their projects. If you can find a bonded contractor, that's fantastic because that means they have bonding set aside that if they don't finish the project, you can tap that bond and get your project done. That is not required under state law, but your better contractors are going to have it. Permits, as we mentioned, we issue permits. We get a lot of calls from insurance folks. They want to see copies of inspection records. They want to see copies of permits. I was telling the mayor earlier that, we had a gentleman call me this week and he had an addition done on his house eight or nine years ago. There were no permits pulled. He went to refinance. Finance company called us and he was denied that refinance because he could not document his work. So it's very important that you get permits and then we inspect and clear everything. Look for local contractors. You're going to have a lot of people that are going to be coming in from out of town. There's nothing wrong if they're, if they're licensed, if they're reputable. That's no problem. Typically, your local contractors live here. You're going to see them. They have an interest in making sure things are done right in their community. And price gouging. After Ivan, trees on houses was a big issue. We had, we had crane contractors come rolling in just as soon as the wind stopped. We had instances of crane contractors charging upwards of $7,000 to pull trees off of people's houses. When a tree is going through your roof, you're going to pay whatever it takes to save your house. There were, there were investigations that were done at the state level. If you run into any kind of price gouging, notify us. We will have folks from the state who will be coming down here. We will make sure that they are aware of it. Okay, fortified. Do any of you know if you have fortified homes? You have a fortified home? Good. Fortified is a private program that was created by the Institute of Business and Home Safety. It is a third-party inspection process during construction. There are three levels. You have bronze, silver, and gold. Finally, the state insurance commissioner, we've been requiring more and more stringent building code requirements that are more and more expensive to meet. Finally, the insurance commissioner has mandated, if you have a certificate for your fortified, fortified home, you are required to be given by your insurance carrier a discount on your wind insurance. It is, it is, it is a legal requirement. So for roofs, when you re-roof, there are certain things you have to do about taping and sealing the roof deck, keep water out. That is a required 20% to 35% reduction on your wind insurance. Silver is for roof windows and doors. That's a 35% to 45%. If it's a new construction and you can do gold, you have to see that framed from the ground up. That is a mandatory 50, 50% reduction in your wind insurance. The Don't Goof When You Re-Roof is a campaign that IBHS and Smart Home America started to make people aware, and this is not just hurricane-related. This is any time you re-roof, ask about the fortified program. People don't know about it. Roofers are not going to necessarily make people aware of it. They want to get a job. They want to get it done. I've had folks who have had new roofs put on and then come to me saying, well, I'd like to get my fortified discount. They didn't contact anybody. They didn't get the third-party inspections and it's too late. And you've just paid $15,000 for a new roof. That is a contact for Graham with Smart Home America. They coordinate the fortified program down here. He is extremely helpful. I have a lot of, a lot of conversations with Graham. He can be reached at that number or at the website. They are based out of Mobile. And here are your licensure board contacts. Home Builders Board, General Contractors Board, HVAC Board, Electrical Board. And like I said, this is not just hurricane or repair-related. This is any time you deal with a contractor. If they are one of these, plus, I did not put the plumbers board on here, but these are the five, those will be the five state trades that require state licenses. And they all have to be registered through their appropriate state board. Our local contacts, this is, this is our office. You can call us there. You can also email us at buildingpermits, with an S, at cofairhope.com. That goes to both of our admin folks and to me. And that's if you have any questions at any time. Anything comes up, you have a complaint, you have something you want someone to be aware of, you are more than welcome to email us at that address. Baldwin County Home Builders Association, they are very active in this area. They're actually based here in Fairhope. They have almost 500 members. They are very proactive in training and construction trades. They're very good. They're, they're an excellent resource. Our public utilities can be reached by calling the warehouse or at that, at that email address, or, excuse me, at that website address. And then also Baldwin EMC and Riviera because they both serve power within our city limits and within our jurisdiction. And that's all I have. So we'd like to open it up to any questions. Okay? Does anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am?
So, if you were to find yourself in one of these emergency shelters, at what point would you imagine that they would bring you back to your community?
Usually, once the winds subside below hurricane strength, the roads are clear and safe, they'll load you up on the buses. If, if you've taken a bus, if you haven't driven there, they'll load you up on the buses and bring you back. As soon as it's safe, basically, that's, that's the answer. When it's safe is when they, they'll, they're going to want to get you out of there as quick as possible. It's going to cost them money. So, you know, it costs the state a lot of money to do that. Not that they want to get rid of you, but, but, you know, when it's safe, they'll get you back.
Yes, ma'am.
How do I find out if somebody's in a flood zone?
You can contact me at my office. I have access to all of our FEMA flood zone maps. There's also, and I don't have the link with me. I should have brought it. I'm sorry. You can go online to the FEMA flood zone overlay, type in your address. If you're not familiar with flood zones, you may not, may not be able to decipher all of it. Thank you. Sorry. You may not be able to decipher everything. So, you're welcome to contact me if you, I can be happy to give you my number. My number, my office number is 990-0141.
Are there any price guidelines? And I know it asks something. You would have to treat you to have across your house, but you were saying it's expensive for cranes.
Right.
Are there any guidelines, general guidelines that you guys put out or publish?
We haven't dealt with that since Ivan. So, there will generally be some direction from the state about how to deal with price gouging. You know, and, and I also kind of told folks, cranes are an expensive business. I've done a lot of heavy industrial construction. A crane operator is going to cost you more than a local tree service. Cranes are expensive to own, to maintain, to insure. So, that is, it's going to be more. It doesn't necessarily have to be $7,000 to lift a pine tree, a pine tree off your house. If we get to a point where we start worrying about a storm coming this way, we will receive information from the state about how to deal with contractors and price gouging. It's hard for me to answer that off top of my head, but there will be some things that will come up about it.
Can I touch on that?
Please do.
Once the governor issues a state of emergency, knowing the price gouging goes on across the state, the, the district attorney's offices, they highly prosecute. It happened during Ivan, and they went after them all. So, if you ever, if we ever, a state of emergency, presidentially declared event, and you see price gouging going on, it needs to be reported, and these people will be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. They don't play with it.
I'll let John answer that. Do we know?
[laughing]
They're props.
[laughing]
I'm not sure. Actually, I'm not sure.
All right. I'm going to tell you all the truth.
How's that?
Let's all smile and giggle a little bit. This was actually, these props were set up for something else, actually. We just made them part of our presentation, so y'all would enjoy it.
And he did that rather seamlessly, too, if you ask me, so.
So, if I ham-hawed a little bit, it's because I had no clue what I was talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
There's a, it says, fill out your, 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 what happens if you have visitors?
In turn, what, what, help me out. What form are you talking about?
The form in the back of the book.
Is that the one? Okay.
In that book, if you have visitors, you just take that book, take a couple extras. If you think you're going to have visitors that are going to come by and stay with you, take a couple extras, take a couple extra. I have tons of those books, and I've got tons more in my office. So, you can take all you want, and you can fill them out for, for all your friends in grade school or whatever, and you can have all your friends on there. Fill them out and put them somewhere where you can find them.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Where's the siren located in half of an area that doesn't cover?
The siren?
The, the siren's located behind the Welcome Center. The Welcome Center, for those of you who don't know, used to be Fire Station Number One. So, it was located directly behind the fire station. When they took down the old police department and built the Welcome Center, they left the siren up on the pole. So, if you look up behind the Welcome Center, you'll see a telephone pole at the very top. You'll see one of the oldest style sirens you've probably seen in your life. And that's where it's at. And it's usually, Jeff might be able to help me on this. We, we tested that siren. What is it? About a two-and-a-half mile radius. You can hear it when, when it's warmer sounding it?
It's about a mile and a half.
Mile and a half? Mile and a half.
So, it's just for the metro?
It basically covers our downtown area. It was, again, it was put in, it was put in for large events to protect our people in case something was going to threaten our downtown area and tell them to get inside, because we don't want anyone, we're, we're putting on an event everyone can enjoy, or is there to enjoy. We don't want anyone being hurt. So, we need to be able to let them know when to take cover.
Yes, sir.
In these catastrophic storm situations, does the city have any kind of policies regarding, like debris pickup at the curb?
And I should have prepped for that answer. That's, that, I need to talk to Arthur. Yes, we do have debris pickup. As you can imagine, it's probably going to be a little bit delayed during a storm. But there are debris pickups, same as you would normally, but it goes a whole lot slower. John, how does that tie into our FEMA? Because we will have a response contractor that will hit town as soon as a storm leaves. Their main job is to get the streets open. And so, I know we were talking a while back, they're going to shove everything to the sides.
Right. We're, we're in the process right now of bidding out the debris removal contract. The city of Fairhope's been real proactive, and we always have a debris removal contract. When a storm starts threatening, it's imminent, the city activates a debris removal contract. That company comes in, and their whole job is to open up our roads. But to make, I think the question you're ans, asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the main roads getting, going into town, getting to the hospitals, getting the, the police officers and the fire department to your house if needed, ambulance, is that what you're asking? What about those roads? Open them up?
No, actually not.
It's about debris pickup at your home.
Correct.
Oh, okay. That, all I can say, that things change when hurricanes happen, and it might be delayed a little bit, but they're still going to pick up your debris. I promise you that.
Yes.
Ask about whether you melt the shutters?
Yes.
You know, you see all these houses with multiple shutters. Are those hurricanes?
They're, I'm going to speak building code to you, so please bear with me. In order to qualify for hurricane protection, it has to meet certain testing, okay? Homemade shutters don't. And I get that question all the time. Can I homemade some shutters and use them for opening protection? You can't do that legally. There are Bahamian shutters and regular folding shutters that do meet those requirements. They're typically made out of aluminum, or they're made out of fiberglass, but it's a manufactured product that does meet those requirements. And one of the things, when we talked about the fortified, fortified does not allow for plywood protection of your windows. They don't accept that. It has to be an ASTM-approved product. You can do the Fabric Shield. You can do impact windows. A lot of people do the impact windows. They're, they are very expensive, but the window itself is like a car windshield. It's laminated glass. And part of the test is they fire a two-by-four at 90 miles an hour at that window. The window will break, but it doesn't penetrate. That is an approved protection, or manufactured shutters will work.
And on this new emergency notification system, is there anything that the public is going to have to sign up for, or do you have all that information?
I can partially answer that. There's, there's a few different things being offered out there. Some of them have a database that will actually have some numbers that, that you won't have to sign up for if you happen to be in their database. But there'll be other ones that you may have to sign up for an app. And that'll be highly publicized. It'll be on social media and on the city website, and it, it, there's no, it's going, we're going to get it out there. We're going to get you all signed up. So, you're going to be taken care of. I promise you. I did want to tell you one other thing real quick that I forgot to tell you earlier. I told you I was going to go back to on intensity of storms. Did you all see the news the other day where, where Nassau put all these little satellites up in the sky? Did anyone see the news on that? Well, Nassau just recently put a bunch of little mini-satellites up in the sky, and they're hoping that's going to improve the intensity forecasting of storms. And those of us in emergency management pray and hope to God that that works, because it's going to make a big difference on, on saving people's lives. And they just started with a few, I think, with five or 10 in space last week, and they're planning on putting a lot more. I meant to mention that earlier, and I forgot.
We had one more question. Yes, ma'am.
You talked about that warnings may come over on our phones, on cell phones. Will you need to register your phone number for that? How you can, because I have your phone number from when I lived in Maryland.
Okay. Let me just say this. There's a system out there that's called iPaws. What iPaws is, iPaws is put on by the federal government. That is what you get on your cellphone anytime. Do you ever get alerts on your phone? Do people get alerts on their phone that you didn't sign up for them? You get them. That's the federal government putting those out. So, so you're going to get those, but they're not very efficient. So, what the city's trying to do is make it better. And they want to make sure that everyone gets it. And, you know, your, your, your alerts for missing children, what do they call those? The?
Amber alerts.
Amber alerts? That's iPaws. And that's, that's a FEMA thing. And, and you're going to get those alerts. If you have a cellphone, you're going to get those alerts. But it's like, I think it's like 50/50. So, we recognize that problem exists, and we want to make sure you all are taken care of. So, that's why we're looking into this system.
So, if we would have to register our number, that's part of what would work? You would let us know?
Oh, absolutely. You'll know what, you'll know exactly what to do. I promise you. We're going to make sure you all know.
We're going to be using that information also for general contact, I mean, general communication. So, we will absolutely make sure that everybody knows and is signed up for that. And you can sign up for different things. I just want to have the emergency information. I want to know what's going on in town, so.
Sherri Lee just reminded me of something. Thank you. We can, we can send links. Someone asked, the young lady asked about access to the FEMA flood maps. We can put those links on our website. One thing that I'll make everybody aware of, they update those maps. Our last update was '07. We will probably be receiving new maps next month, which has been four years in the process. We, we will have to have public hearings with that. That's part of the adoption process. So, there will be things that we will do where the, the public will be able to come, look at those maps, see where you fall within those maps. Typically, when they issue a new map, they increase the base floods, or they widen the flood zone. So, there may be some folks affected that are unaware of it right now. We will be advertising for those, because we will have to hold those, that's part of our requirement, is to hold those public meetings. So, please be looking for that, because we will be doing that here within the next couple of months. Okay. Thank you all very much for taking time to come out. Thank you.